Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you really believe we've excuse me, how will I doing a different prayer?
Wrong sermon.
I know. Heavenly Father, we beseech you with divine guidance in this meeting, keep us ever mindful of our obligation, grant us, dear Lord, wisdom, tolerance, and courage that we may well serve our county and fulfill our trust. Amen.
Amen. Move to approve the minutes of August eighth.
Second.
Discussion?
Roll. Hambley.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Sweattick.
Yes. Okay, do we have any public comment regarding any pending resolutions? If not, we will move on to resolutions, engineer's office, and I believe we have Josh today.
Yes, we do. Good morning, how's everybody doing today?
Good, good.
Looks like we have five resolutions, all bridge-related.
Okay.
The first one on Greenwich Road is a funding source that we received through the federal stimulus package, the BFP package they call it, so that's on Greenwich Road just to the west side of Westfield. And then the next four are bridges that we are going to apply for funding through OPWC, so those applications go in this fall, and then we find out if we're awarded projects next July. And then we had thirty-one permit applications.
All right, move to approve the five resolutions.
Second.
Discussion?
Roll. Hambley.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Sweattick.
Yes. Thank you, Josh.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Jeremy Cinco, our sanitary engineer.
Morning, everyone.
Morning.
Morning.
Three resolutions for consideration today. The first is authorizing a memorandum of understanding with Chippewa Lake Village to replace existing sanitary sewer and water mains as part of the village's Brookshore Drive Road Improvement Project. The second is accepting and awarding bids for the Boston Road Pump Station Replacement Project. And the final is awarding Contract A, rejecting bids for Contracts B and C, and authorizing the sanitary engineer to rebid Contracts B and C of the 2022 Home Sewer Treatment System Replacement Project.
Move to approve the three resolutions.
Second.
Discussion?
Roll. Hambley.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Sweattick.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Nate Appig, our Park District Director. And I see he has a guest with him.
Yes. Good morning, Commissioners. My guest is a brand-new employee. Today is his first day, so please be gentle.
Welcome.
He started at eight AM.
Wow. Nice to meet you.
So this is part of his initiation, right?
Okay.
But John is new with the Park District, came to us from Mill Creek Metro Parks, our new park planner, so he'll be helping us plan for the future.
Great.
I appreciate the invitation. Recently, I had sent to Rhonda a resolution of support for your consideration to support our Clean Ohio acquisition that would see us purchase two-hundred-and-sixty-nine acres with Clean Ohio support up in Liverpool Township.
Excellent.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? You always do great stuff with land you acquire, Nate, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Roll. Hambley.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Sweattick.
Yes.
All right, thank you very much.
Nice to meet you, Josh.
Thank you, nice to meet you.
Okay, next up, we have Holly Murren, our Human Resources Director.
Good morning.
Good morning.
On our personal changes resolution today, we have three new hires, one in maintenance, one in office for older adults, and one in transit. We have six rate increases, three in sanitary, one in maintenance, one in commissioners, and one in transit.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Roll. Hambley.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Sweattick.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Brett Thomas, our Finance Director.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I have nine resolutions for your consideration today. The first one is increases in appropriations. For the most part, what you're seeing here is largely issues for grants and Family First The second resolution that I have for you today is transfer of appropriations. Our third resolution is expenditure adjustments. Most of these are, again, due to Family First Council because we've had a changeover in some of the administration portion for that. Our fourth resolution is revenue adjustments. We had a fee that got paid in for sanitary that went into the wrong account. On the fifth resolution, we have the creation of Family First Council's family-centered services and support for fiscal year twenty-three. Our sixth resolution is creating the Family First Council's early intervention fiscal year twenty-four fund. Our seventh resolution is the purchase of more gasoline for the county. Port's petroleum came in at two dollars and fifty-two point five cents per gallon. Our eighth resolution today is expenses of county-elected officials. The sheriff's office is sending one officer over to Pennsylvania this time for dare officer training, just to bring that to your attention. And on the ninth, our ninth and final resolution today is our weekly bills in the amount of three million, three-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand, nine-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars and eighteen cents. As always, copies are kept in the auditor's office for anyone's perusal.
All right, move to approve the nine resolutions.
Second.
Discussion? Roll. Hambley.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Sweattick.
Yes. Thank you, Brett.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Chris Jacob, our County Administrator.
Good morning. Good morning. Two resolutions this morning. The first is authorizing a subrecipient agreement between the Ohio Department of Health and the Medina County Board of Commissioners, and this is for the purpose of providing supplemental funding for tuberculosis testing, evaluation, and treatment services, and specifically is targeting the displaced Ukrainian people two years of age or older in Medina County. We'll have to do some coordination with the County Department of Health, and I've reached out to the Health Commissioner to try to figure out how we're going to be operating this program in conjunction with the Health Department, so keep you posted. Next resolution approves a construction agreement between Medina County Board of Commissioners, the Hinkley Township Board of Trustees, and Columbia Gas of Ohio, Inc. This is for the construction of or installation of a gas transmission line beneath the paved surfaces of both Crestview Drive and Marlin Drive in Hinkley Township. The township trustees have also received this agreement and have already approved this agreement and signed off on it.
Move to approve.
Second.
Both resolutions.
Discussion?
Roll. Hambley.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Sweattick.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have department updates. First up, we have Richard Nelson, our Chief Building Official.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Left in a rush and forgot my glasses, so I'm going to struggle a little bit.
They're dollars, sir.
No shame.
Dollar general or Dollar Tree?
Overall value of construction, of course, continues to remain down compared to last year, about fifteen percent. New homes, new home values are down a little bit, but still healthy at five-hundred-and-eleven-thousand. Year-to-date average is three-eighty-eight. That's page one. The new home starts are down in total also for, you know, three, four-year average. Page two, of course, now the monthly receipts are down compared to, you know, last year at this time, no surprise. Page three, overall year-to-date receipts are down eighteen percent. Continuing on to page four, breakdown of the villages and the townships' residential permits issued. Fifth-page graphs of the same information. Commercial permits are on page six, you know, broke down also into townships, and then the last page has some more information on the commercial permits issued in July. So, in our main operations, we're happy that our new clerk's doing well. We're happy to have her helping us out. Again, this report will get put on our website later today, but it's important to, I want to mention that this report is an amalgamation of a lot of information that we gather in our permit system. And while Alicia, you know, the past clerk, has been doing this for twenty years, she got pretty good at it, and I think even, probably took her three, four hours to put together. Sadly, it's taken us eight or ten. And so, right now, Keith's trying to automate it more so that it won't take so long, but that's probably going to change the look of it. Hopefully, it'll be, generally speaking, the same information, or might look in a different form, and it may end up being some less information. I don't know how important it is to have it all in text and then redone again in graph form, you know, but...
I usually do all graphs as long as I can know the actual number the bar represents, so if there's a way to label the bars or something, text probably is less important.
Yeah, well, and sometimes a graph, you know, tells a pretty good, quick picture. I get that, but...
And I, it's funny, I'm opposite, I don't even read the graphs. I like your, I like the...
Really?
Yeah, yeah, I like the numbers.
Well, possibly next month, it's going to change.
Like, I think, because I think, like, for example, it's interesting to look at, you know, thirty-seven and thirty-five, the explosion in Seville and Brunswick Hills, you know what I mean?
Yes.
They're the outliers and new home starts, and things like that.
Yeah, so, like I say, a lot of this is gathered, some's computed. Doing the report this month, I was noticing that the last-month report had a big error. The average construction of new homes year-to-date was off by a lot. It was, I think, reported at about four-hundred-and-forty-one-thousand when it was actually still down around three-eighty-eight.
Well, you're still in the adjustment period with your new clerk and everything, so...
Yeah, so I think the total got added up and then divided probably by the wrong number of months. Thank you. We'll give those back so I don't carry them away.
There you go.
But, so anyhow, it likely will change, possibly next month. It might, it might take an additional month to do it differently. I'm not, not positive. But generally, in our review times are good still, you know, three, four days or so on residential. Commercials crazy, down to two, three weeks.
Wow.
We just don't have as much coming in, so that's going good. Yeah, so that's all I have.
Thanks, Richard.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Ed Zachary from Veteran Services.
Morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I want you to draw attention to the first page, there are numbers on the bar graph.
You can do both.
And it's color-coded.
Dang.
So, this report goes through June of this year, so it's just the first half of the year. The first page deals with the Department of Veterans Affairs and what we kind of do on their behalf. So far, we've did two-hundred-and-seventy-four claims for them, those are brand-new claims for veterans, widows, family members, things like that. It's a hundred-and-fourteen more than last year, so, like I said in my report in January, we are booming, so, I mean, business is overwhelming because of the legislative changes at the federal level, and the number of people we're seeing is just off the charts compared to what we have in the past. We filed a hundred-and-ninety-six medical and ancillary benefits for veterans and their family members. Current pending claim inventory in our office is four-hundred-and-twenty with twenty-six appeals. We do those appeals in our office now virtually with Washington, DC. The average claim filed is forty-six, typically that's around thirty. So typically, we do about thirty new claims a month for veterans and their family members. We're doing forty-six as of June, so those are pretty big numbers. And you can see the bar graph where we're at down below by month, and historically over the past few years, we did have a dip after COVID. Last year, we kind of reached the numbers back where we were prior to COVID, and this year, we plan on probably going way over that. We're looking at probably six to seven hundred. Page two is the good news, that is the geographic distribution of expenditures by the VA for 2022. That report usually comes out in May-June timeframe, so I will tell you, we had the biggest increase we've seen since I've been around. We went from forty-four-point-nine million dollars to fifty-five-point-one million dollars, and that is money directly paid to residents of Medina County that are collecting from the VA in one shape or form, either a pension or a compensation check or something like that. The total increase is, you know, in 2022, they spent a hundred-and-four million dollars, a hundred-million, four-hundred-thousand, there we go, in Medina County. It's a sixteen-million-dollar increase from the previous year, so the work we're doing pays off, and we're seeing it returns back into the county for dollars spent. As far as our financial assistance, our financial assistance remains extremely low. It has been down the past few years. We saw a little rise in COVID, and then it dropped again. The vouchers written through June are sixty-nine-thousand, nine-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars. We paid out sixty-four-thousand, two-hundred-and-forty-three dollars, and we also approved twenty-five-thousand dollars in appeals for financial assistance this first half of the year. Our transportation network, we go to the three clinics, the one in Akron, the one in Parma, and the main hospital down at University Circle, and we also, a few years back, we started where if you had one of the veterans' IDs cards from the recorder's office, you could ride the Medina County Public Transit for free, and that has boomed. So we average about two-hundred-and-fifty to two-hundred-and-seventy-five trips with that transit system throughout the county, and it's about seventy or eighty veterans, so, you know, it's about three or four different trips per veteran. So those are usually people that can't afford to take the bus, you know, they're going out to do their grocery shopping or doctor's appointments and things like that, so it gets them out of the house throughout the county. You know, I can't talk enough about the PACT Act, that's the legislation that was passed last year that's changed so many things in our world. There were some deadlines this past week, I think it was Thursday, we filed forty-six intent-to-file's for veterans because that was one of the deadlines that hit. So those are just walk-ins on that day, we were just doing them right at the front desk, and then we scheduled for an appointment for the next month or so, we'll see those veterans back in our office, so it's been pretty busy. We are supporting the Medina Municipal Veterans Treatment Court. We hope to see one in the county sometime soon, I know that's been discussed, but we're over there usually twice a month for their court with the VA and assisting them and whatever veterans that are in that court system that live in Medina County. I will tell you that homelessness continues to be a problem and is on the rise, and it's not so much people that are homeless, it's more or less keeping people that are at risk of being homeless from becoming homeless, and a lot of those are seniors that, you know, because of inflation, the rising cost of rents typically is the main reason, is rents are just going up, and their income isn't going up because they're in a fixed income. So we do a lot with MMHA, we do a lot with the VA and CRC, there's a lot of resources out there. I know MMHA had applied for what's called a HUD-VAS voucher, which go to veterans, it's a program that was started back in, like, 2010 during the recession, and we got, recently, MMHA got ten HUD-VAS vouchers, so those are where the VA will place somebody in a home within Medina County and pay for it for a period of time, so that's a great thing, and I know we've been working with Skip over there, and he's doing some great things too, not just with veterans, but with everybody. Other than, you know, we still run the dental program, we partner with the Medina County Health Department, I want to let people know about that, it's, I think it's an underutilized program for our veterans. We help, you know, the, the Health Department has some federal funding, and then we use some matched money to help veterans maintain their dental care if they're eligible for our financial assistance program. And other than that, the program with the Ohio, or the Parma Vet Center that we give them space, well, you guys give them space over in the office for older adults, and we appreciate that, is they now have two counselors over there, and they're doing group sessions, and things are going well over there, so they always want me to pass on the thanks to that. And last but not least, only thing I have to say is we have a big event coming up October fourteenth at the VFW here with Congressman Max Miller's office, he's sponsoring a vet benefits thing where we're bringing the VA and a lot of other different agencies together, kind of a one-stop shop. Our office will be down there, we're kind of helping them get people there. You do have to RSVP because we got to know the numbers of people coming in, so the VA knows what to be prepared for. He's did these clinics around various areas throughout his area, so we asked him if he could do one in Medina County, and that's all I have, pending any questions.
Discuss on your building.
So, we're a little bit behind, but Rome wasn't built in a day, and so we currently have the requests for qualifications from various architects that we're reviewing. I think we have a meeting on Thursday to review those, and then my understanding, and I'm really good at getting VA benefits for people, I'm not so good at building buildings, but once that's done, that'll go back to whichever one gets chosen, and then hopefully they will finish the designs and we can put it to bid. My hope is to have a shovel on the ground by the end of the year, but I don't think that's realistic from what I'm hearing, but I'm still going to say we're going to have a shovel on the ground by the end of the year because positive thoughts turn into positive action, so we're moving forward. Like I said, a little bit behind, but we're excited about it, and we need it, you know, with the numbers we're seeing, I mean, we need the space to put somebody else in there to do claim work and things like that, so...
I had a quick question regarding, and this is the first I've noticed, that the county veteran population, actually, when I looked at that, it was like it peaked apparently in 2012, and we continue to go down. How is that determined? Is that because we're receiving these benefits, or those...
Yeah, it's kind of funny, because years ago, the number, you know, the question used to be on the census, and it's not anymore.
Yeah.
So the way I'm told, if you read the VA, they take this number of benefits that they pay out, medical services that they pay out, and then, of course, it's like a, you know, some kind of algorithm as to, you know, what they come up with, but it's not an actual question on the census.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, so it's not a number-for-number of a person joined the military and a guy died today or anything like that, so it's an algorithm number.
That's right, because...
I know...
The census is declining, so I'm just...
Correct, yeah, Ohio's declining. I think the only place that is going up is Texas, California, they're starting to see numbers. They did expect that our numbers would start to rise in, like, 2025, a few years back, they had this chart, but it won't go back to the thirteen, fourteen thousand, it was a slight increase, so...
Got it, got it, okay. And then, did you have any, you were at the fair, so you...
We were at the fair, yeah.
You, between Veterans Day, at the fair, or your booth, did you connect with folks who...
We, so historically, we always, for the, two weeks after the fair, we see an increase in phone calls and people coming in, appointment schedule and things like that. Right now, we're, we're scheduling appointments about three to four weeks out, we've never been that far out. Typically, it's a week or so, and we're just, it's just, there's not enough time in the day.
Yeah, good, that's good to hear.
Okay.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a Commissioner Resolution, we have a resolution approving the petition for the boundary line adjustment for Brunswick Hills Township.
I will move to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Roll. Hambley.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Sweattick.
Yes. We have a resolution approving a visitors' policy for the Medina County Dog Shelter.
I would move to approve.
Second.
Second. Discussion?
Aaron, did you have anything? Yeah, I, this is, so we've, a couple things that we're working on at the dog shelter, and kind of coordinating with a group of volunteers who've taken an interest out there, and it just is part of the process, I think, leading to getting more formal involvement from volunteers at the shelter, trying to kind of clean up some things, and there really wasn't an official visitors' policy out there. Like, this is mostly common-sense stuff related to people's behavior on-site and following directions of the, of the employees there, so this is just kind of the first step, I think, in a several-step process that will ideally result in a kind of better coordination between some of the volunteer groups who've taken an interest in what goes on out there, and also the operations on the ground, and so I appreciate the cooperation from the dog shelter, their staff, in kind of identifying some of the things that we needed to do in there, and then also Commissioner Hambley had some, some language that supplemented, supplements what's in there as well, that I think is all, you know, mostly common-sense stuff about no drugs or alcohol on the premises.
Yeah, well, I picked up from some other shelters, so there's nonprofits, some of the government, and they've just, as I know, a number of them actually take something like this and then turn it into also the volunteer program.
Yep.
That comply, and maybe that's, I'm not sure how much our need is for, but it's like, at least here's the opportunity to outline what the requirements are. As you said, it's all common sense.
Yep, but that is where, that, both the groups and also me personally, I think, we'd like to see it head as to where there is a little bit more robust opportunity for volunteer involvement, and the shelter's looking at getting at some additional fenced-in area put in out there as well, and once those improvements go into place, there should be more opportunities for volunteers to be out there, and so this is kind of step, step one in a several-step process to see that happen, so...
Makes sense. Thanks for working on it.
Sure.
Roll. Hambley.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Sweattick.
Yes. Okay, um, do we have any public comments? Okay, discussion session. Anybody out in the audience? Okay, Steve, you're up. Anything?
No.
Okay.
Not really.
Aaron?
I just wanted to make note that we have no AKA meetings coming up, they'll be publicized. I think the first one's going to be a week from Thursday for the, be the twenty-fourth, for the Climate Action Plan, so those meetings have all been publicized already, but just wanted to make another announcement about that, too, so. No, but two others in the county in addition to that one.
I'm sure you'll enjoy them.
Yes, I might, I will not be able to be at the one on the twenty-fourth, but I...
I'll be there.
Okay, I thought you were planning to go to that one, yep.
Definitely, definitely.
But I...
I'll be there.
Medina County will be well represented.
I did, I, oh, I did have something, I forgot, I wanted to...
Sure.
Communication with Brian Fearn with the Historical Society, Chris was unaware that we had entered into an agreement with the hospital regarding the Warbonne Building, and originally, we took the assumed responsibility for its ongoing maintenance and taking care of it.
It is weird to drive by the hospital and not see it there, and it's weird.
Well, some people just like, you mean it's been gone? Yeah, for quite a while, but the Historical Society has it at McDonald's Phillips, they have a path, they're redoing it, but they have found, too, in its movement, that they have to redo the base of it because the timbers are rotting, and I, they've asked if they would, if we would be willing to pay for the expense of the lumber and all that and paint, but then they will take over permanent responsibility for maintaining it, so it's part of the agreement.
I wonder if that would qualify for ARRA? We still have ARRA.
I don't know, I don't know.
I think the dollar amount is relative.
It's about like five hundred bucks.
Oh.
It's like five, less than five, so it's like, they were actually, as Brian was talking to me, I could hear the saws in the back cutting, so...
I, yeah.
Yeah, you're all right with the idea?
I'm fine with it.
And they'll, they'll take full responsibility permanently, we just transfer it over to them, but we'll go ahead and pay for the lumber.
No, it was probably that they stepped up to save it.
Yes, indeed, and actually, making it part of their overall educational display, they have intents on applying for a capital grant this next round for an education center over there, and that just adds to that...
You know, Chris didn't know about the Warbonne Building.
No, he didn't.
But he might not, he might also not have known what great things Stan said about him last week at the meeting since he was down. Yeah, he, he got to the mic and said wonderful things about you, you should watch it.
Yeah, I know, I know, we were, so, okay, sorry, that was the only thing to bring up.
So, one of the things we wanted to discuss today, and we have lots of information, Sarah, should you want it for an article, but we have a discussion for April eighth, twenty-twenty-four, which seems far away, but it's really not for planning purposes, the eclipse coming to Medina being one of the focus areas of where viewing will be excellent, and it is expected that the day before and the day that the population of Medina County will explode because kind of wants in some people's lifetime situation to come and view things like that. So, I didn't know if you guys had any thoughts about, you know, I mean, they really think hundreds of thousands of people can be pouring into Medina County, setting up tents on people's front yards, I, it's, it's a huge thing. So, thoughts on what we should do in planning for this for April eighth?
Yeah, I think, I think it presents an opportunity to coordinate, I, I think some of the various subdivisions may be more or less concerned, you know, and, and I could see that going either way. If you're already equipped, if you're the, the city and you've got public facilities and restaurants and things like that, you're probably going to, you could probably reasonably expect more people to end up there, but even in a, in some of the more outlying areas, you know, a smaller bump in population becomes a problem as well. And so, I, I think as we look towards the future, and I appreciate the, the materials included, some things we received from EMA back, it looks like maybe at meetings last, over the summer last year, I think it's a good opportunity to perhaps coordinate a response with the EMA, involvement of the EMA staff and the subdivisions and say, you know, best practices for the county, and it can kind of be facilitated from, from those discussions.
Well, and we're hearing that some of the school systems may even close because...
Medina City's closed, yeah.
Yeah, the predictions for how many people will be pouring into the county are, it's extraordinary.
Well, I, I think probably first, we ought to consider closing county facilities, okay, but I think in terms of planning, certainly the, the first responders, and in fact, the way I read the money that's been allocated, the million dollars, is it's a reimbursement for first responders, not for EMA planning agencies.
Right.
So, in other words, the first responders will end up being responsible, the police departments, the fire departments and so forth that are associated with that, so understanding how reimbursement costs be done will be important to the local communities. The Sheriff's Department might be, I think, considered a first responder, so the Sheriff's Department. I would, if you don't mind me being a capitalist, but I think our Convention Visitors Bureau could take advantage of this.
There could be some fundraising opportunities, yeah.
If we're going to be, we ought to be probably involving our new director and them in planning events around that timeframe.
Yep.
To take advantage of them coming in with our hotels, restaurants and all that, and kind of helping facilitate and direct people, here's a good place you can come if you want to come to Medina County to see it, here's where you can park, here's where you can eat, here's where you can stay, that would be, I think it makes the most sense.
I wonder, I wonder if the Fair Board has considered, you know, allowing camping on their, I mean, they, it is the kind of thing that, when you've seen it happen to other cities, and people come with their pop-up tents and, you know...
Of course, it's also April in Ohio.
Yeah, that's true.
I, I would rather see like the CBB kind of help provide, become the host of coordinating it.
That'd be great.
And emergency management can be in the background, help support whatever, for the local entities that have to provide the police and, and whatever service is necessary.
I can imagine development liaison, did you want to meet with the CBB or would you like me to?
Sure, sure, we'll pass it on, and, and maybe they're already planning it, from that standpoint, I think it makes sense to, certainly.
I think if we, if we can, at, at least from a, from an EMA's involvement standpoint, get, get them informed, or I'm sure that, I know they're already informed, they brought it to the June meeting, but, last year, but dialed in so they can help respond to any other subdivisions that do have questions about it, I think they could kind of take the lead on that part of it. But if CBB's able to plan, one of the things I noted in that, we just have so much information about it, in the Ohio EMA Planning Preparation Guide was the, the, the opportunity to try and extend people's stay, so they don't have...
Right, exactly.
People here for a ten-minute event, and then everybody getting on the road at exactly the same time. So, CBB, I think, is a great idea to, to kind of...
They can work with the, the local chambers, this is mindful of what was going, although as in the legislature, I remember meetings with Dan Hostetler and that, and the hotels regarding the Republican National Convention in Cleveland. We knew that there was going to be a bump up in population and activities, and they were coordinated in that fashion, so I think that that's, that's really what you're talking about.
That's a great idea.
And I think we'd be able to, and certainly the support is in the background of the local first responders, working with the cities and townships and the Sheriff's Department.
So, what I would like to suggest is maybe Brian preparing an informational packet letter to send out to the seventeen townships, the villages, and the cities, so that, you know, he can, you know, let them know this is coming in case it's not on some of their radars and the potential population, you know, explosions in each area and...
It is, when you look at this, whole swath of, of communities that could be benefit from this, because of all the people coming in.
And like these...
We want to be the preferred one because we have other activities that'd be kind of fun things to do.
And, and like some of these longer things, he can put as attachments for them to...
Exactly, right, sure.
Okay, so I will ask Brian to do that, but then also, are you guys be okay with adding it for our, our non-emergency buildings as a closure for 2024 for next year?
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Okay, so for, again, our non-emergency buildings?
Sure, eclipse holidays, so to speak.
And obviously, Aaron, our residential buildings will still stay open?
Well, sure.
Okay, so, Rhonda will add it to the list, it happens to be a Monday, like a lot of other holidays, so, all right, Sarah, if you would like the three packets that we have here, you're more than welcome to mine. All right, so, and Steve, I'd be interested to see what the CBB director has, because it really is a interesting kind of thing to have Medina be a focal point of, one of the best viewing locations, so, okay. Anything else?
I will entertain a motion to go into executive session then.
Okay, I would move, we'll go into executive session to consider the sale or purchase of real estate, or real property, and to consider the employment of a public employee.
Second.
Roll? Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick, yes. All right, and I, I'm a licensed marriage person, so starting dearly beloved was just...
You missed it, she started.